...address, application number six twenty-seven dash twenty-five, Steven and Donna Chivola. Permission to leave in above ground pool having rear yard of fifteen point six feet instead of required eighteen feet. Residence double A district, two seventy-eight cluster, east side of Nimbus Road, one hundred and eighty-five point seven three feet north of Spad Lane, Holbrook.
Hello, Steven Chivola, one twenty-seven Nimbus Road, Holbrook. Yes.
All right, any questions from the board?
Not at all.
No comments on this?
No comment.
Is there anyone else in like here in this matter?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Six twenty-eight dash twenty-five, Michael Di Pietro. Permission to leave wall having rear yard of three feet instead of required four feet, pool patio having side yard of five feet instead of required six feet, patio having side yard of two point six feet instead of required four feet, and shed having side and rear yards of three point seven feet instead of required four feet each. Residence B district, north side of Fergrove Road, one hundred feet east of Port Avenue, Ronconkuma.
Name and address, please.
Michael Di Pietro, three eleven Fergrove Road, Ronconkuma, New York.
And you're here on the wall variance and the patios?
Yes.
All right, any questions from the board?
No questions.
Planning any comments?
No comment.
Is there anyone else that would like to be heard in this matter? I'll take a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the application.
Take a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, application's granted, thank you.
That's good, thank you.
You will.
Application number six twenty-nine dash twenty-five, Terrence Quinn, Jr. Permission to leave roofed over basement entrance having side yard of twelve point one feet instead of required fourteen feet, shed having side yard of zero point eight feet instead of required two feet, having sixteen feet behind the front line of the dwelling instead of required twenty feet. Residence B district, south side of Jackson Street, one hundred and ten point five seven feet east of Irish Lane, east Islip.
Tom Gallagher, representing Terrence Quinn, forty-six Jackson Street, East Islip.
Good evening, Mr. Gallagher.
Evening.
Anything to present or? Okay. Any questions from the board?
No questions.
Planning any comments?
No comment.
Is there anyone else that would like to be heard in this matter? I'll take a motion, please.
Make a motion to grant the application.
Second. I'm sorry, do you want to grant the, not to be enclosed on the basement entrance?
Yeah, that makes sense. And not to be enclosed on the roof over basement entrance.
Second, please.
Second.
All in favor? All right, application's granted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Application number six thirty dash twenty-five, Yusufuddin Sayed Family Trust. Permission to leave one-story addition fourteen point two by thirty-six point six, having side yard of twenty-one point five feet instead of required twenty-five feet, basement entrance having front yard of forty-two point six feet, and egress windows having front yard of forty-three point six feet instead of required fifty feet each. Residence triple A district, southwest corner of Motor Parkway and Valray Boulevard, Central Islip. Oh. Okay. No, looks maybe they are.
Yeah, it is them.
Yusufuddin Sayed, twelve twenty Murra Parkway, Central Islip, New York.
Yes.
Yeah, no comment.
Anyone else?
Permission to leave shed seven point seven by nine point seven, having seven feet behind the front line of the dwelling instead of required twenty feet, and driveway onside property line not having required setback of four feet. Residence A district, south side of Judith Place, one hundred and seventy-nine point eight seven feet east of Quintuck Lane, East Islip.
Lucas Ingram, twelve Judith Place, East Islip, New York.
Good evening, so you're here on the shed and the driveway side toward variance?
Yes, sir.
Any questions from the board?
No.
Planning any comments?
Uh, no comment.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to be heard in this matter? I'll take a motion, please.
Make a motion to grant the application.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Application's granted, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Application number six thirty-two dash twenty-five, C and J Home Solutions Incorporated. Permission to leave second-story addition, four foot by eight point five foot, having front yard of twenty-four point six feet instead of required twenty-five feet, rear addition having side yard of ten point seven feet instead of required fourteen feet, and second-story addition having side yard of twelve point seven feet instead of required fourteen feet. Residence B district, east side of West Second Street, sixty-three point zero four feet south of Richland Boulevard, Ronconkuma.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Roxy Antrella, Dynamic Expediting Services, with offices at two-three-one Islip Avenue, Islip, New York. We're here today to maintain a second-story addition and a rear addition. The second-story addition is a two-story front portico which encroaches into the front yard about half of, about six inches, so it's got twenty-four point six instead of the twenty-five feet, and has a side yard of twelve point seven instead of fourteen. Based on the aerials, it looks like it was erected sometime around two thousand and seven. Same goes for the rear addition, however, the side yard kind of decreases a tiny bit, goes in about two feet, so that side yard is ten point seven instead of the fourteen feet, but it is in line with the rest of the dwelling.
Okay, any questions at this time?
No questions.
Planning any comments?
Uh, yeah, as she's saying, it's, it's great up and this is a very common setback in all the Residence B neighborhoods because it was conforming at the time, so it's no problem.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to be heard in this matter? All right, I'll take a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the application.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, application's granted.
Application number six thirty-three dash twenty-five, Karen Almendrez and Alejandra Estefany Bustillo. Permission to establish accessory apartment pursuant to Islip Town Code section sixty-eight dash six oh two, to leave patio having side yard of one point five feet instead of required four feet, and driveway onside property line not having required setback of four feet. Residence A district, west side of North Gardner Drive, two thousand six hundred and eighty feet north of Privet Place, Bay Shore.
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Roxy Antrella, Dynamic Expediting Services, with offices at two-three-one Islip Avenue, Islip, New York. We are here tonight to establish an accessory apartment. The apartment is four hundred and forty square feet, it is owner occupied. The driveway has been inspected by engineering, however, it does require a DPW permit to bring the apron to code, which we are currently working on. We're also here for the patio, which is a small area on the right side of the house that maintains a side yard of one point five, and the driveway having, being on the side property line not having required four feet.
Okay, any questions at this time from the board?
No questions.
Planning any comments on this?
No comment.
Is there anyone else that would like to be heard in this matter? No, I'll take a motion, please.
Yes, I'll make motion to grant the application. For a period of three years, the accessory apartment and also grant.
Second. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, application's granted.
Thank you.
Application number six thirty-four dash twenty-five, Jason and Christina O'Neil. Permission to erect one-story addition leaving floor area ratio of twenty-six point seven percent instead of permitted twenty-five percent, to leave patios onside property line not having required setback of four feet, and shed having side yard of one point one feet instead of required two feet, having nine feet behind the front line of the dwelling instead of required twenty feet. Residence A district, north side of Sequambs Lane, north, sixty-five feet west of Eaton Lane, West Islip.
Good evening, Karen Diana Laspisa with Moreno Expediting Services, P.O. Box thirty-nine, Bethpage, New York, one-one-seven-one-four, here on behalf of the property owner. We're requesting permission to construct a one-story addition off the rear of the dwelling which will bring the FAR from twenty-five percent to twenty-six point seven percent, which is a difference of a hundred seventy-eight point five square feet over the allowable. At the time of making the application, it was also brought to the attention about the existing shed and the stone patios. The existing shed is used strictly for storage, it was there when they purchased the house, it is not visible from the road or the neighboring parcel.
Can they move the shed further back, otherwise the rest of the application.
It, it is a plastic shed, it could, it could, it could be moved. It could be moved. The stone patios are not even set in stone, they're just pavers, it's just for the garbage pails to kind of sit level. The barbecue, the other stone patio was for the barbecue, just to sit level, but that was all existing prior.
Planning any comments?
No, no comment.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to be heard on this matter?
That's me. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we deny so much of the application seeking to leave the shed, nine feet behind the front line of the dwelling and grant remainder of the application.
Second. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Application's denied in part and granted in the balance.
Thank you, have a good night.
Application number six thirty-five dash twenty-five, Robert Albanowski. Permission to use dwelling for two-family, family use only pursuant to Islip Town Code section sixty-eight dash four-one-nine point one, and to erect second-story deck leaving rear yard of eighteen point one-six feet instead of required twenty-five feet. Residence A district, southwest corner of Sedan Lane and Middle Road, Bayport.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, member of the board, Len Crick, Islandwide Permit Services, office at eighty-six Center Street in Ronconkuma. In March of this year, there was a large fire at Two-Siteme Lane that caused significant damage throughout the house and totally destroyed its second-story rear deck. While the house is being rebuilt, we're here tonight seeking permission to apply the town's two-family, family use only special exception to the dwelling under the age option for Mr. Albanowski's mother-in-law, who's now eighty years old. We're also seeking permission to erect a replacement second-story rear deck with an eighteen point one-six foot rear yard. In case number twenty-eight dash nine zero of April seventeenth nineteen ninety, the board granted a twenty point seven foot rear yard setback for the original second-story deck, which was approximately twelve feet by thirty-five feet. The proposed deck will be slightly smaller at approximately ten by thirty-five feet, but the reduced rear yard of eighteen point one-six feet is due to the fact that the deck will be attached to a three-and-a-half-foot cantilever of the house versus previously running under the cantilever and attaching to the mainframe of the house. We feel that the deck is in keeping with the nature and character of this heavily treed neighborhood where it will barely be seen by neighbors, and it should also be noted that the rear yard backs up to a flood control recharge basin. Any questions?
Accuse myself.
Oh, yeah?
Who knows, somebody can accuse me thirty-five years later. So I'll accuse myself, thank you.
Fair enough. Okay. I'm sorry, any questions from the board?
He can't talk anymore.
Yeah, he can't talk for the next four minutes. Any questions for Bill?
The next three months.
Any questions from the rest of the board?
No questions.
No? Planning any comments?
I would just reiterate, the most important part is that the back's up to a flood control area, it's not going to get developed, so it's not impacting anybody.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to be heard in this matter? No? All right, I'll take a motion, please.
Make a motion to grant the application.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Application's granted.
Application number six thirty-six dash twenty-five, Reef Family Trust, Jeffrey and Toni Ann Reef, co-trustees. Permission to establish accessory apartment pursuant to Islip Town Code section sixty-eight dash six oh two. Residence B district, south side of Joseph Street, four hundred and two point three three feet east of Johnson Avenue, Seville.
Good evening, I'm Toni Reef, I reside at forty-four Joseph Street, Seville, New York, one-one-seven-eight-two.
I'm sorry. To hear for the accessory apartment?
Yeah, I request the permission to establish an accessory apartment.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board?
No questions.
We just want to note that we did receive a letter of support from one of your neighbors.
Oh, thank you.
Planning any comments?
No comment.
All right, I'll take a motion, please.
Make a motion to grant the application for a period of three years, second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Application's granted for a period of three years.
Thank you very much.
Application number six thirty-seven dash twenty-five, Ariel and Mary Lee Manzoueta. Permission to establish accessory apartment pursuant to Islip Town Code section sixty-eight dash six oh two, on lot having width of sixty-eight point zero six feet instead of required seventy-five feet. Residence A district, west side of Nichols Road, four hundred and seventy point three four feet north of Susing Boulevard, Hopak.
Ariel Manzoueta, five twenty-four Nichols Road, Hopak, New York. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Yes, Mr. Chairman. Correct.
The requirement for seventy-five foot, usually the board's consideration in deciding whether to vary the seventy-five foot is really related to whether the parking is going to work in the front yard of the property. You have a good-sized driveway, you, you have to have a minimum of four cars off-street in order to comply with the accessory apartment ordinance. It looks to us like you can fit more than four cars in your driveway if you had to?
Six.
Six, right.
Six cars.
You can't park a car if you wanted to on Old Nichols Road, right?
You can, it has a area.
Oh, there's a shoulder and you can park on it?
Yes, shoulder as well.
Okay, that's also very good.
Well, there's six cars in the car, yeah.
Is there anyone else that would like to be heard in this matter? All right, I'll take a motion, please.
Make a motion that we approve the accessory apartment for a period of three years and approve the balance of the application.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Application's granted for a period of three years.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members.
Application number six thirty-eight dash twenty-five, Jose Herrera and Katie Marisela Tercio Santos. Permission to leave chicken coop having rear yard of three point five feet and side yard of seven point two feet instead of required ten feet each, and roofed-over patio onside property line not having required setback of four feet. Residence A district, east side of Ferndale Boulevard, one hundred and fifteen feet north of Peach Street, Central Islip.
Hi, my name is Orlando Salazar, I'm behalf of Katie Tercios, I'm the applicant like the expediter. We're here.
Okay.
Thank you.
And you're here?
Yes. It's just, oh. Yes, a little bit. Okay. All right. Yes, yes, yeah. It's not going to be there forever.
Uh, I did have a comment about the roof over, actually. This, I'm looking at this and it looks like there's an X through the roof over, is it, is it proposed to still be there or?
No.
Based on the plan, it looks like there's an X through it for some reason.
Just temporary, it's going to be moved.
Because it lists the height as fourteen point five here.
Why would there be an X? Is that the survey or indicating that there's a roof over?
Is that what he's trying to do? It's an interesting way of doing it. But he's also calling out his fourteen point five feet in height? Maybe I'm confused.
How tall is the?
The what?
How tall is the structure on the patio?
Like ten foot? The gazebo?
Yeah, how, how tall is the gazebo?
Like ten foot, twelve?
Fourteen and a half?
Ten, twelve. Oh, it's a rubio, sir? All right, I can tell the home. The gazebo.
No, nothing else I wanted to comment on.
Is there anyone else that would like to be heard in this matter?
Yeah, it's not being addressed.
Application number six thirty-nine dash twenty-five, Razib Ahmed Laboni Sultana, to renew permit for accessory apartment pursuant to Islip Town Code section sixty-eight dash six-one-six. Is anybody here on that application?
Come on up.
Residence A district, east side of Thompson Drive, two hundred feet south of Fire Road, Bay Shore.
Elizabeth Savino, thirteen ninety-seven Thompson Drive. Um, the letter from the town's.
One, one second, you're not the applicant, correct?
No, I'm the neighbor.
Is the applicant here for this application? No. All right, do you want to put on a second call?
Six thirty, it's six thirty.
Do you want to give the option of adjourning it or?
We're, we're going to just, the applicant's not here right now, so we're going to give them a few minutes just in case they run late.
I personally don't think that they're going to show up because the application. Oh, sorry, I don't think they're going to show up because the application's been approved year after year, but there's become an issue with accessory apartments being built, and the letter to me doesn't explain which one we're talking about. I had sent copies to the town with the, uh.
Okay, you know what, why don't you just hold that thought for a week, the applicant has to be here.
Okay, and if, and if.
It gets denied. So we'll give it a little bit of time.
Okay.
And if they don't come up, our chairman will make the determination whether we'll adjourn it on a date convenient for you. We don't want you to sit here all night waiting for that.
Okay, no problem.
So what do you say, Mr. Chairman, ten minutes-ish?
Yeah, seven, yeah, ten minutes.
We'll give them ten minutes.
Yeah, we'll give them fifteen minutes.
Fifteen, I'm just over.
Six forty-five.
Call it six forty-five.
Six forty-five. Six forty-five.
See, see what happens? Well, you know what I could do real quick?
We didn't?
While we, we have two minutes, sure. Not the reserves yet, but.
Well, we can call, wait there, we'll have to call this one. Roxanne's here.
Uh, yeah, I don't want to call that early because there's, the public, there's people that want to be heard on that.
Got it.
Yeah, so, just real quick, we have thirteen accessory apartments and seven two-family, family use onlys to renew for a period of three years.
Motion.
Second. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's done. All right, and now I can start talking very slowly on the next case, right?
Aye.
Application number.
We're waiting for six thirty to happen.
Six forty dash twenty-five, Gilbert, Jr. and Lori, Lori DeAndrea. Permission to erect two-story dwelling, leaving front yard of thirty-six point eight feet instead of required forty feet, second front yard of twenty-one point two-five feet instead of required twenty-two feet, and floor area ratio of thirty-one point eight percent instead of permitted twenty-five percent. To install hot tub, leaving rear yard of six feet instead of required fourteen feet, pool deck leaving side yard of four point six feet instead of required ten feet, and walkways occupying thirteen point five-three percent of front yard instead of permitted twelve percent. This is the longest minute. Residence A district, northwest corner of Sunset Drive and Palmer Circle, Seville.
New York.
Read the text.
Six thirty.
Under that. Six thirty, all right.
Nice. Hi, hi, good evening, six thirty here. It is, my name is David Bush, registered architect at ninety West Main Street, Bay Shore. Good evening, everyone. I'm here on behalf of the homeowners, Gil and Lori DeAndrea, who are out of town and couldn't make it this evening. The, um, the, the, the address is one fifty-four Sunset, as called. Within the application, there's five drawings that we submitted. One is an existing property survey that has a date of March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and then there's four drawings submitted, a site plan, a first-floor plan, a second-floor plan, and then a section, if you will.
Mr. Bush, can I interrupt you?
Please.
Looking at this and what jumps off the page to me is floor area ratio of thirty-one point eight to twenty-five. My first question is, I've done research, so we know what the nature and character of the neighborhood is, because we like to hold it at third, third, on the nose.
Yes, so I did, I did do some precedent research, in fact, yesterday I had some additional conversation with Nick, and to your point, Mr. Wechler, it is at thirty percent within the neighborhood. There is a, there is a recent sixty Sunset Boulevard, sixty Sunset Avenue I refer to, that is, that has an FAR that's approved at thirty percent.
Thirty, three zero.
Three zero, thirty percent.
Okay, what I'm looking is, what do we have, have we have grants with plural over thirty?
So, um, I was unable to find anything.
Okay. Can I tell you that it's unlikely we're going to grant it, just me?
Mm-hmm.
I don't speak to these five general, but, uh, I don't think that's going to be granted. Do you want to go back to the drawing board?
Can, can I just present?
Sure.
Yes.
Go ahead.
I, I do want to speak to just the, and I do, I appreciate your position, I respect the precedent, and that's why we did do some homework. The, if I can just speak to the parcel itself, the parcel is, and I, and I know all this is zoning code related, et cetera, I don't want to, but I'd just like to point a couple of things out. So, the parcel that we're looking at is a corner parcel as well, that's part of an original subdivision which is from nineteen fifty-six. The sixty Sunset, which is up the block, is part of the same subdivision along, along Sunset Drive. The, the significance of this lot, it is a smaller lot, and it has, it is impacted by water usage, you know, the land area is taken away by water. May I present the diagram?
Please.
There's four copies there. So if, if I could just continue to speak, this, the sixty Sunset, recognizing it's a, it's a big lot. What, what I'm looking at is really the original subdivision. The subdivision for that area, if you look at that diagram, it's hard to see because of graphic. But that, that's Lot B, sixty Sunset in that, in that diagram. The property is a full-depth parcel. There is no underwater land area. One fifty-four Sunset, if you see that white line in the middle of the canal there. That's the piece of the property that's under, you know, underwater. So when we do our land use calculations or FAR calculations. If we took one fifty-four at its full lot area, its bound area, we'd actually have an FAR of twenty-five point one-eight percent. With that land area removed is where we approach the thirty-one point eight percent. So I, I do recognize the distinctions. But it, it is because of that subtract, subtraction of land area and that the corner radius, so.
Can I just make one suggestion once again? We have a lot of water in Islip. And we have never considered, even though it's underwater, we've never given the benefit as if it wasn't a bit of water. So, I mean, I'm not trying to throw water on your argument, but. I don't think we've ever said, yeah, the tide took away property, ergo, if you didn't have the tide, you didn't have the water, you had the land.
Right, right, okay. I just wanted to point it out to the board's attention, see if there was any consideration there. And, you know, maybe not the, the full request, but thirty point five, which is of some benefit, things like that for the area under, underwater.
Planning, what do you got for us?
To start with, I, I think we did discuss this, you're not actually requesting the, the front yard occupancy for the walkways at this time, right? That was, that was made to conform?
Correct, that was made to conform. Item five, right? Item five for the, the thirteen point five percent walkways.
Yeah, I think, I think that was changed to conform.
The front walk, yeah, there was something I noticed in the call that was different than the final denial letter.
So you don't want the variance for the walkways in the front?
The front walkways are now compliant. In the actual submission you're looking at, you'll see that it states it at nine point five percent.
Yeah.
And lower the maximum twelve.
So you mentioned that there's a final denial letter, so there was a, an update to what got submitted to our file? We have one that is dated August fourteenth.
Correct. Do you have it here? Yes, that's what I was looking at, August fourteenth, Mary.
It doesn't have a walkways, does it?
And I believe that's the only change in terms of the call of the meeting, though, right?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see the walkways in it. They must have been, been there from.
Yeah, there was a June twelfth denial.
Okay.
And then there was an August fourteenth, the August fourteenth was used for the submission. You know, the, the only other item which I'll say Nick and I were discussing is the jacuzzi in the back corner. And how it requests a six-foot, a four-foot-six setback. But it's really relative to a corner bump. And there's a, there's really a one-foot overlap when you look at the parallels and perpendiculars, so it was. It's a silly call, and I mean that respectfully.
Make sure everything else is right. Nick says it is.
So the, the primary item is the FAR.
Okay, so we can eliminate it if you want.
I'm gonna make a motion that we strike the reference to walkaways occupying thirteen point five percent of the front yard instead of permitted twelve percent.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So that's now denied, that portion.
Thank you.
Strike from the strike, cool. Uh, planning, anything else?
Yeah, to speak to the rest of the application. In terms of the setbacks, most of these are pretty justifiable. The front yard is to a corner radius, but it holds forty feet conforming at the point where it's not curvilinear. So I don't think that's problematic. Second front yard is minuscule. And as he was kind of alluding to there, the, the deck and the jacuzzi setbacks are being kind of measured to their boat slip. Because you don't get setbacks inclusive of water. In this case, I think it's pretty reasonable to sell. Because it's a boat slip that they kind of indented into their property, I think it's very reasonable to give them extra consideration for that. We don't want to punish people for having a good place to be putting their boat as opposed to just in the canal. And then with regards to the FAR, as, as already been kind of been said, no, there's not really any other cases above thirty percent. They do have some underwater land that's not being included, but that would be typical for any kind of property like this. And even if you just, even if you don't include the underwater land, the rest of their buildable lot is still above what a conforming parcel in the zoning district would be. So I don't really think it really merits consideration.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else like to be heard in this matter? Okay, so.
I'll make a motion to deny so much of the application.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so the application's granted as a member.
Thank you very much.
I'm coming, Dan and Bill. Okay, uh, did you want to call them? Not yet, yeah, okay. Application number six forty-one dash twenty-five John and Barbara Giebel. Permission to leave one-story addition eight point four by ten point four. Having rear yard of fifteen point seven feet instead of required twenty-five feet. Resulting in floor area ratio of forty-six percent instead of permitted twenty-five percent. And to leave second-story deck having side yard of thirteen point five feet instead of required fourteen feet. Residence B District, west side of Cherokee Avenue, five hundred and fourteen point seven-five feet north of Third Street, West Islip. Oh, is that even a concrete? Okay.
Hi, I'm Barbara Giebel, reside at ninety-four Cherokee Avenue, West Islip, New York. My husband, John.
All right, good evening. You're here, you're here on the one-story addition and the FAR and then the second-story deck?
Yes.
Okay. Planning, any comments on this?
Yeah, so this is a difficult case, an interesting case. Start with the deck, the deck is really not an issue. I don't think pretty much everybody would agree with that. It's minuscule and it's abutting a wetlands area. The sunroom is, so the two things that would definitely stand out, the FAR obviously, and the sunroom setback. The sunroom is very small. It's like eighty square feet total. Mostly, it is just a glass enclosure. Doesn't really have much bulk to it whatsoever. It's just a glass enclosure around the jacuzzi that happens to be attached to the house. Now, as to how they get to this FAR, forty-four out of forty-six percent of that is legacy FAR. This is a very undersized lot. It's about four thousand square feet and change, I think, forty-nine hundred, I believe. And that's kind of due to the fact that this is a dead end that then goes to what appears to have been, at some point. Potentially a plan to have this road go all the way through to here, which was then stopped because of the wetland area. And they got a nice chunk of what should be their front yard cut out by that right-of-way that never actually got developed. That's causing them a lot of grief in this situation. Again, a lot of this FAR is legacy. It's only a little less than two percent that's actually included in this sunroom. Given the context, I actually think it wouldn't be completely unreasonable to grant it. Uh, this was developed, I believe, in the seventies. It came to the zoning board for the lot area and was approved by the zoning board. The number is very bad. I, I'll agree with you on that. It's a very bad number. It's a bad number regardless. The way to distinguish it, yes, would be, I guess, twofold. In terms of any kind of practical impacts, this is a very small glass enclosure around it. I don't know if you have pictures available. Yeah. It's not really very offensive, as you were saying. With regards to the FAR, again, this is, I believe, one of, if not the, smallest lots in the entire area. In large part because of this undeveloped roadway that's never going to get developed. Taking out what you can see is part of their front lawn that they're actually making an effort to maintain. They're not getting credited for that. Now that bumps that number up fairly substantially. I think really the main point, though, is that the actual addition itself is really not what's at issue here in terms of any kind of substantiality argument. The substantiality would be there regardless in terms of the FAR, and it's been previously approved and is legal.
Well, we can just, like, distinguish it in the opinion.
Okay.
But even if, if this, again, what Nick was alluding to, if this application was denied, it still exists at forty-four percent FAR. It's still a substantially high number.
Okay, I was just asking you that unimproved road, that's something, I mean, that's the case.
Absolutely.
I know, we like that word, but that's what I'm saying, you know, it's a ninety-two percent FAR.
I did not have the time to do that math, I'm sorry to say. If I had to guess, I'd probably guess it would still be relatively high. But again, that's because this was developed before we had an FAR ordinance. It would be in the thirties, I would imagine.
Thank you.
I'm going to do the second call on the public renewal. Has anybody arrived on the application of Razib Ahmed and Laboni Sultana? Okay, ma'am, so we wanted, the board would like to ask you, what would be a good date for you to come back, if you'd like to come back again? Because we can't begin testimony without the applicant present.
Mr. Chairman, if I make, I, I.
Come forward if you'd like.
I would like to make a motion, we mark it off the calendar, why?
Why are we giving them adjournments?
Have one finish. Why have this person sit here, come here, the person, we didn't get a phone call, a representative didn't show up, nobody came up and said we'd like an adjournment. They just failed to appear. Why is it now incumbent upon her to come back? Maybe they'll show up. Why don't we mark it off, let them reapply? Or let them schedule a date, so we're not inconveniencing people bringing them out of their house. She didn't do anything wrong. I don't think she did anything wrong, did you?
But what do we do, deny it?
I'm ju, I just.
Hang on one second. Mark it off the calendar and let them reapply.
Or make them reapply.
Make them reapply, yeah. I don't think it's fair that people just blow it off.
Right, it'll expire, but they'll have to put it back on the calendar. They'll be out of compliance.
Then they'll be out of compliance. I don't think it's fair to drag members of the public, and they don't show up, no phone call, no letter, no email, nothing, yet there.
Well, they, yeah, it's a little bit of confusion because when they, they bought the property three years ago and renewed and transferred, and that was just a public session.
So let them call and set it up.
So they may believe that it's always public session, and we respond by doing a public hearing when we receive a letter like yours.
But nine, most of the time, ninety-nine percent of the time, people make it, they get it.
So what are we going to, deny it or?
No, mark it off the calendar and let them reapply. They'll be out of compliance.
We didn't deny it, but it expired, right? The three years expired.
Well, once they filed a receipt, it didn't really, it had, they.
So we're not getting anywhere then?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
We have a receipt in the system, so, whatever you want.
Give them an adjournment or?
Uh, we would have to contact the applicant and find out why they didn't appear, and then pick a date that works.
And let them know that they don't show up, it's over, it's being denied. Is that fair?
So what they, are you guys available to come back?
There's gonna still be a follow-up, because the issue, Cody Barry.
Your, your address?
Thirteen ninety-seven Thompson Drive.
What's, oh, sorry, Cody, what address?
Cody, thirteen ninety-seven Thompson Drive, so the neighbor to them. So the issue is that we don't know which apartment, there's multiple apartments there, so we don't know which one this is in regards to.
Multiple apartments in this one?
Correct.
Property?
There's not supposed to be.
You were correct. That's kind of why she wanted to be here.
That may be a good question to ask the applicant to answer that question.
I sent pitches with the letter.
I, yeah, we've got it, we've got it.
That's why we scheduled a public hearing.
Right. So, I mean, I could just tell you what I know.
No, because we don't have the applicant here to testify.
What is a good day for you to come back? We'll give you some dates, we'll notify the applicant. And if they don't come back on, and you're, on the next day, they fail to appear.
I mean, yeah, we're pretty much available through the month of November.
Okay, are you, are you available November eighteenth?
If I can't get the applicant, then it's not gonna work. If I can't get in touch with them tomorrow, I have to set that date by five P M. tomorrow.
Okay.
So if the applicant doesn't respond to me, then I.
That's not, the eighteenth is not good.
So it, it's actually.
December ninth, I'm sorry, December ninth.
December ninth.
Yes, I'm putting it in the calendar.
Yes, all right, so take a motion to adjourn until Tuesday, December ninth.
Motion.
That's second, all in favor? All right, adjourn until December ninth.
Thank you.
We're speaking to the microphone, so you can hear.
Elizabeth Savino, um, I heard you about the chicken coop, so my other neighbor on the, no, can't access that one. Who do I call regarding that?
Code enforcement.
Code enforcement, okay. Thank you.
Okay, take care. Ms. Savino?
Oh, it's on the letter.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We have your, I'm just confirming your address.
Your address is thirteen ninety-seven, right?
Okay, same address, okay. Got it, because I didn't know if we should have given either. I think he said, I think he's, I think he said Cody Barry. Okay. Application number five thirty-four dash twenty-five, adjourned for September nine, two thousand twenty-five, Thomas and Kimberly O'Malley. Permission to renew permit to maintain corral and front yard when permitted only behind rear line of dwelling pursuant to Town Code Section twelve dash twenty-seven A four and twelve dash twenty-eight. Residence double A District, south side of Allwood Avenue, one hundred and thirty-six point five-seven feet east of Deer Path Road, Central Islip.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Roxanne Trelle, Dynamic Expediting Services, with offices at two-three-one Islip Avenue, Islip, New York. We were previously before the board on September ninth to renew this permit. However, at that time, the evergreens that were planted were smaller in nature. They were about two, three feet in height. The board asked for plantings to be redone at a more mature stage. This is Mr. James Gallagher, and he has planted the evergreens. They're about six, seven feet in height, and I did bring photos to show the board.
Did you please submit the photos?
Five three four dash two five. Do you have anything you want to add? Okay.
They only planted them today. If it becomes an issue, I'll just have to tell them I've been in Florida for like four, for the last six weeks due to my father's death.
Okay.
That's really, that's all I can add.
Okay.
I would have done soon, but it's just, yeah.
It's okay if they ask a question, then you can explain. I took them today.
Hmm?
Do you want me to note that on?
Hmm.
I was there about three o'clock this afternoon.
Anything else at this time?
I got yours after, so I just went and took them to some case. I'm sorry.
Did you want to say anything else?
Nope, I'm okay.
Planning any comments?
I don't have any comments.
It's got to be people who want to be heard.
Yes. Maybe just one.
Okay, is there anyone else that would like?
Good evening, Susan Pellegrino, eighty-five Deer Path Road, Central Islip. So the shrubs that were planted today do look nice. They are in front of the fence that runs parallel with the street, but my understanding is that they were to be planted around the perimeter of the corral, and that is not the case. And I also thought that the shrubs that are along the street line are supposed to be inside the fence, because if they do grow bigger, which they will, it's really going to impede on the roadway, and I wasn't sure whether that was addressed. The straightaway, the, the straightaway fence, yeah, the other portion of it. How is it screening the corral? Because the corral is shaped like a pentagon, so you're seeing the corral from really all sides. They just planted, yeah, the, the shrubs are just planted around the one section of the fence, so I'm not sure how that screens it.
I, I was there today.
Why do you not follow and qualify as you're not being taught for a court
I, I will let, um, I will let James elaborate, however, when I was there today, there at a dead end, the front of Allwood Road is ninety percent of where the corral is. There's two tiny, small sections, one would be on the side of the front of the house, and the other on the side of the dead end, it has two big trees there. So when the leaves are
I'm looking for the road, and that's what the general public would say. I don't know why you didn't finish the job.
There's only really one spot, right?
Yeah.
It's on, it's on one side.
Just put some to wrap it around.
To add two more, two more trees, that's, that's fine.
I wouldn't change because you're going to come back again, and I think our, our case is going to be weighing very quickly. Screen, it says.
Screen, you're wrong.
I don't know what else. He will be confused.
I, can I see where you want them to add it? Just because when you're there in person on the side of the dead end, there are big trees there.
Uh, Jay, would you
Yes, so this is a close-up of the bottom left picture, and it, I'll pass this back up. There are three huge trees there, so I just want to make sure it's just from the right of the trees over a couple more. I, 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 I know, I just want, this is a close-up of this picture. So what I want you to see is there's one, two, three, four huge trees that don't have leaves right now, so they're not, it's not covered. However, that, that would just leave this portion, so I just want to make sure that just doing here is okay, and not that they have to plant right under a tree that's going to overgrow and block growth of the evergreen. Okay. Can you look at the bottom left picture? What I'm trying to say is there are four huge trees there.
Just there's apple trees and everything there.
So if I put an evergreen right under it, it's not even going to grow. So you got to plant a couple more.
Okay. I thought I was complying with what the intent of what yous were asking, that's all.
So if, if you're looking at the pictures, you know, this, this corral is shaped like a pentagon, and the largest stretch of the corral that is clearly visible from the street is right next to the house. It's, I don't, where is it? West, northwest of where the shrubs are pan- planted now. And the other portion of it where the, because they're referring to the, the big trees, is another stretch. So if they screen it the way they screened the front of it, then that seems like it would be in compliance. But if we're talking about one or two or negotiating, it's, it's not satisfying the screening of the corral.
Mr. Simmons didn't show the corral in the proper shape. He showed it like a potato, not a pentagon. So there's two sides of a five-sided pentagon that are lacking screening.
There's three sides.
Well, there's no need to screen the rear, because we did talk about the general public. We didn't talk about a perimeter, we talked about the general public. But I see what you mean, from Allwood Avenue, there's the one near the front of the house, and then there's the one near the dead end, which the one near the dead end would be a bit questionable whether, how much screening had to be there, because there's hardly any general public down there. Is there an access point to the park there?
Yes.
Okay. So
It's, it's not for private use, it's a public access gate that people who have permits can access that. And I'm not sure how that was factored into, you know, whether it's the general public or the people that live there. I, I mean, yeah, it's all visible, it's all visible from the street. The part of that corral is clearly in front of the rear of the house, you know.
I don't think at this juncture, we have enough photographic evidence to follow what you're saying or follow what the applicant is saying, so
Right, but it says general public, not street, so, so, I mean, that's really what it comes down to. So obviously, where we're looking at with the trees, that's visible to the public.
Yes.
If something is only open to permit holders and anyone's down there, I don't find permit holders to be public.
I agree. The general public is why, that's why we put general public. We didn't say permit holders strictly.
Who would the general pu- I'm, I'm, I'm just curious, who would the general public be, the three people that live, the five people that live there?
I can go there, I don't need a permit, that's the general public.
Oh, okay.
Right.
So as long as it's screened off from the general public, we, it seems to be from the photographic evidence is what we circled, but if there's additional area
We don't have pictures of it, the other side of it.
Yeah, we need a picture of that.
Yeah, it's a peril.
Do you understand our question? We don't have pictures from it on the other side.
Do we have that on the computer?
Right, but do you have, do you have, does the survey give the, the corral, the, the dimensions of the corral?
Yeah, give it a shot.
We have, we have, the corral is on the survey.
Right, so doesn't that give you dimensions of where the fencing is?
It's not.
It doesn't seem to be accurate.
Okay.
We may, let's see, we get a street view.
Can we get a street view, Nick? That's a good idea.
He's working on it.
It's not up to date, but yeah.
Does it reflect from three o'clock this afternoon?
Six years ago.
Okay.
Most of it hasn't changed, probably.
Right.
No, I assume the corral is in the same location.
All right, the corral's the same location, Mr. Gallagher? Can you see the picture?
Yes.
On the screen?
Yes.
The corral's in the same location?
Yes.
Thank you.
So can you, Nick, can you go, keep going, go around and now make a left? Make a left.
Yeah, go up.
Yeah, screen the corral, is that the portion that you say, ma'am, is not screened?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Is that me? Yes.
Is that gate the only gate for ingress and egress?
One gate in the front, one gate in the back.
I want to make us put some more shrubs in.
Yeah.
Okay.
Almost, even with like the front of the house? It's about what? Okay.
Can I just interject one, one second? There's a gate right at the rear of that, so there's, there's front gate and there's the back gate, so it might end up being four trees, just because they grow very wide. I don't know if five, you, okay.
I put one by every post. There's, so there's five posts, five trees.
Okay, and do you still want them on the dead end side as well?
No, we're not going to put it on the dead end.
Okay. Okay, so five trees here. The circle that you made on the photo, that's the dead end side, so he doesn't have to do those. Okay. Okay, okay. So just on this side here. Okay. I don't think you can, there's usually like a cutoff, like November first for plantings, or they won't last, so I would say in the spring they could be planted.
No. My, my father just passed away. I'm supposed to be in Florida now, I'm flying back tomorrow with my family. Okay. Yeah, because I've been in Florida.
I think November first isn't really relative right now, because there's not a thirty-two degree, thirty-two degree evening forecast until like November twenty-eighth.
November fifteenth?
So, I think November
I'll get it done.
November fifteenth is reasonable.
But we have to put a date, getting it done could be twenty years from now.
No, 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 you're right.
So let's, hang on.
When do you want to get it done by?
Before next weekend.
Okay, let's put a date.
So that's November
Why don't you give yourself a little more time?
November tenth.
Don't be ridiculous.
Like you said, I, I don't know if they're going to keep selling them through the winter.
November tenth.
But you can take care of that, we're just giving you a little extra time.
November fifteenth would be great.
November fifteenth, fine.
Perfect.
Thank you. All right, I'll take a motion.
Motion.
Two years, for a period of two years.
Motion that we
Central Islip, you got it.
Yes, motion that we require the applicant to plant five trees along the fence, so it screens the view of the corral from the general public.
Uh
To be planted by November fifteenth.
Twenty twenty
Second.
Twenty twenty-five.
And grant the balance of the application?
And grant the balance of the application.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Okay. Okay. Oh my gosh, I can't see anymore.
Application number six forty-two dash twenty-five, Jane Dietz. I understand we have a request for an adjournment. Is there anybody else here that wanted to be heard on the application of Jane Dietz?
Jane Dietz.
Okay.
No.
That's good news.
We haven't opened an adjournment, or is that the
I, I think we should make it open. Do you have any, any idea whether you'll get in touch with zoning quickly enough to have it for December nine?
I think, I think
I don't think there's any real rush at this point in the season any longer, right?
Yeah, no, there isn't, but I think December ninth is a good amount of time for us to address it.
Okay, let's do December nine.
All right, so I'll take a motion to adjourn until December nine.
Motion.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you.
Application number six forty-three dash twenty-five, Seth Porty and Brittany Khan. Permission to erect second-story addition thirty point three by fifty-six point two irregular, leaving front yard of twenty-three point three feet, and roofed over porch leaving front yard of nineteen point five feet instead of required fifty feet each. Side yards of seven point six six feet and seven point zero eight feet instead of required twenty-five feet, and total side yards of fourteen point seven four feet instead of required sixty feet, leaving floor area ratio of thirty-one percent instead of permitted twenty-five percent, and to leave above-ground pool having side yard of eight feet instead of required eighteen feet. Residence triple A district, east side of Fairview Place, two hundred and seventy-nine point five feet south of Wind Woodcrest Drive, Hop Hug.
How you doing? I'm Michael Arado, Captain Permit, five thirty-five Broad Hollow Road, Melville, New York, one one seven four seven. So we're here today seeking multiple release in order to build a second-story addition, roofed over porch, increase FAR from twenty-five percent to thirty-one percent, and to maintain an existing above-ground pool that doesn't meet the required setbacks. This house, along with many of the houses in this area, were built on angles, which makes it non-conforming and is unable to meet the setbacks in a triple A zone. The lot size is in triple A zone, as you know, are forty thousand square feet. This lot is just over nine thousand square feet, so it's heavily undersized for this zone. Second-story addition, as being proposed, will not be affecting the current setbacks to this house, as is staying within the existing footprint of the house. The addition will be relocating the three bedrooms from the downstairs to the upstairs while also adding two additional bathrooms, one which will be located in the master bedroom, a laundry room. The current square footage is fifteen hundred and fifty with the garage included, and the proposed second-story addition will increase it by twelve hundred and sixty-seven square feet totaling twenty-eight hundred and seventeen square feet. The allowable square footage and with a twenty-five percent AFR is The allowable square footage with a twenty-five percent AFR is two thousand two hundred and fifty-six. This update to the home will allow the owners and their family to grow in this home for years to come. The roofed over porch will be affecting the setbacks, shortening them from twenty-three point three to nineteen point five feet. Approximate square footage of this is two hundred and fifty-two square feet, seven point five feet in height, and it's about six feet in width. The design of this is not to be enclosed, nor do they plan to ever enclose this in the future. With regards to the above-ground pool, this was just placed in the incorrect spot by the owners. Pool is only four feet in depth, and the deck is about two point eight feet. We don't feel that this pool will create a negative impact, or has created a negative, a negative impact on any of the surrounding properties. We have not received any phone calls or letters, letters in opposition to this application, and while the proposed alteration in the existing pool will be self-created, we don't feel that if the board was to approve this application, it would create a negative impact on the property, the surrounding properties, or the environment. No, we, we had actually a very similar case in the same neighborhood just last hearing.
Just last hearing, and weren't three presidents cited for that?
Yeah, and this is very, very close, honestly, to what that was, a second-story addition with very similar setbacks to this. The only part of this that's getting any closer to the side yard is the roof over porch, which, it's mostly open. I don't really think it's an issue, so long as it's, you know, not enclosed. Besides that, this is all existing setbacks in an area where this kind of thing happens very routinely. And then the only other thing, the FAR, no. It's, there's no numbers over thirty percent in the area. I, I knew, I knew that one, so. I tried. Okay. Yeah, pretty much. The, the pool is a bit close, but again, these setbacks are kind of, they're pretty misleading setbacks. They realistically should not be this high. And that goes for everybody in the neighborhood, and then we like porches, so, no issue.
Is anyone else in like, ready for this matter?
I do. They can have, first, to make an application, and we deny so much of this application. At thirty-one percent of the AFR, we prove that at thirty percent. And we prove the balance of the application that the roof over porch might be in place.
Are you in second, or in favor?
Thirty percent on the AFR.
You got it, thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Application number six forty-four dash twenty-five, HGTV MCM LLC. Permission to subdivide lot into two parcels. Lot one, to erect two-story dwelling leaving floor area ratio of twenty-nine point nine five percent instead of permitted twenty-five percent. And lot two, to erect two-story dwelling leaving floor area ratio of twenty-nine point nine percent instead of permitted twenty-five percent. Residence B District, south side of West Fifth Street, two hundred feet west of Spruce Avenue, West Islip.
Larry Buscemi for Select Permits, Fifteen Vineyard Way, Mount Sinai, New York. Good evening. This is a simple application for a lot line change. There are currently two lots, one is ten thousand feet, one is six thousand square feet. The proposal here is to move the lot line twenty feet, which will then result in two eight-thousand-square-foot lots. The applicant proposes to build two, two one-family dwellings, one on each lot. They, lots themselves meet the lot requirements for area, and the only question here is FAR. The FAR in these two lots are both in the twenty-nine percent range, which is in keeping with grants of the, the board in the past. Other than that, these lots and this application conforms to zoning regulations. If the board has any questions.
I don't really have much to add to that. They're taking one non-conforming lot and one conforming lot, and they're making it into two conforming lots, to build two houses. There's really not much more to it than that. It's, I mean, he's right, it's keeping in line with previous decisions.
Hi, yes, good evening, everyone. Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Angela DiMeo. I reside in the property directly behind where this gentleman wants to erect one thirty-one West Fourth Street. We've been living there for the last forty years. There's always been one home on that property line. It was a Cape, it had a detached garage, and it had a shed. Always only one dwelling home. My property will be directly impacted by this, by erecting two, two-level homes. It will invade the privacy of my backyard. It would give me no privacy whatsoever to my, my backyard dwelling. I don't know if you, if you have on the survey, if you could see my property. It is directly behind there. That's my house, sir, yes. And there has always been, as I said, one, one home. And now what he's proposing to do is to divide that lot into two homes, taking up the entire back of my property with two now homes that are going to be higher than my high ranch. I don't understand why that they can't just, and again, there is no sign on the property even saying that they are applying for variance to build these two homes on this land. It's just fenced in, as it's been for quite a while. I went around to other neighbors who knew nothing about this hearing tonight, because there was nothing posted. There's a big event going on up at the middle school. It's a rival football game, last game of the season, so they're there with their children. I have a picture of the home that's directly across from where this house, these two homes, want to be erected. I'd like to know why something like this, that would fit into the neighborhood, can't be done. And also, I am the only, if you go around the neighborhood, I would be the only home in the surrounding blocks that have two houses on, facing the back of her property. I mean, it just changed the whole landscape of our block, West Fourth, West Fifth. If you look at the, of Spruce, if you look at that road, none of the homes are what he's proposing, and there's not even a diagram to show what he's proposing. I believe it's a hundred by a hundred. I believe, I, I could be wrong, but I believe, it was built, the home is erected in nineteen seventy-two. Uh, sorry, eighty, eighty-five. No, but isn't, didn't you say the second lot was smaller than the, the other one? That he wants to actually...
What's happening, there's, there's two lots already there. One of the two is undersized currently. You couldn't build a house there based on the current thing. So what they're trying to do is take some of the land from what I believe is a similar-sized lot, what you have, a hundred by a hundred, and transfer it to the other lot so that a house could be built there. But the two lots already exist, and by doing this, they have two lots that are legally conforming to the code. As Mr. Wexler was pointing out, the only thing they're really here to get a variance for is the house being a little larger than would normally be allowed. The two houses itself, they have, as of right, we don't really have the authority to tell them they can't do it, because they, they have the legal right to do so. They meet all code standards on that.
How do I know that it's not going to be a multifamily dwelling? I understand that.
Yeah, the most we could say on that is that they're not supposed to be, and if...
I'm sorry, I have to roll my eyeballs there, because I know for a fact there's a lot of illegal renting being done. I know that, I, I, I understand that, I understand that. I understand that, but understand also, our, my position is that, where's my right to my privacy? I guess I don't have a right to privacy, because now, now when I look out my kitchen window, I'm going to see two houses instead of some area where I could, I, I know it's, it might be funny to you guys, but it's not funny to myself. There are trees, they're half-dead. Why doesn't he take them down, then? There were shrubs back there, but they were killed because the property was let go. Unfortunately, the man was an elderly man that lived there. Unfortunately, he passed away. Nobody knew. I mean, the property, the gr, the overgrowth was out into the street. Where was the town to do anything about any kind of enforcement then? I understand, okay, I get it. Okay, and I, and I guess maybe it's a little bit of a sore spot for me as well, because way back in eighty-five, when I had a house on West Fifth Street, I wanted to build a dormer on my property, that I was denied by the town, because they said I would rent my upstairs illegally, when all I wanted to do was build a dormer for my kids safely. My husband's a volunteer, they've lost kids in fires, but the town denied me the right, because supposedly of some zoning law back from nineteen sixty, that said a two-level house couldn't be, even though I had, all my, all my neighbors said, "No problem", the board denied me there. But yet, here, I moved away from that, and now I'm going to get exactly my right to my light, and more, all the other stuff there is going to be taken away from me, just because. Just saying, not fair, but I guess you can't fight town hall, right? Sorry, don't mean to be, I have a right to be upset, though. A forty-year member, actually forty-seven years in West Islip. And to have everything changed now. What can you do? I guess you gotta move on, right?
Also, ma'am, you mentioned about the overgrowth and the town's enforcement. You're welcome to call code enforcement moving forward. They have an obligation to come out and observe any specific violations.
A lot of people made complaints about that, nothing was ever done. I mean, I even knocked on door, I walked through poison ivy. The US Postal Service made complaints to you, to the town, about the overgrowth. The guy was, the postman was delivering mail there, walking through poison ivy. It was literally out into the street.
Well, moving forward, if you call code enforcement, they are obligated to come out and personally observe whether or not there are code violations on the property.
Okay. Thank you.
Can you explain, like, where they are in the building process? So they would likely be building the, the front of the property soon and have to remove all the vegetation, correct?
Yeah, that's exactly the point I was going to make. Engineering has already approved the erosion control and all that, which deals with that. So, yeah, they'll, as soon as the plans are approved, they'd like to move forward. And in that process, they'll clear the property, and all the poison ivy will be gone. They're not selling a house full of poison ivy. And as far as, you know, the, the notice requirements, those, you know, you know, right, okay. And, you know, I'm looking at her house, and I'm thinking, she could put up trees, but I don't know. That, that pool is awfully close to the property line, so maybe she doesn't have room for them. Just saying.
Anything else?
Thank you.
No? Take a motion, please?
I'll make the motion and grant the application.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Application is granted.
Thank you, folks, have a great night.
Application number six forty-five dash twenty-five, Frank Joel Montero. Permission to establish accessory apartment pursuant to ISL town code section sixty-eight dash six oh two, and to leave accessory structure having height of nineteen feet instead of permitted fourteen feet, having two stories instead of maximum permitted one story. Residence B District, east side of East Third Avenue, one hundred and twenty-two point eight eight feet, north of Greenwood Road, Bay Shore.
My name is Frank Montero. I am the homeowner at thirteen ninety-three East Third Avenue. I'm submitting the permits to establish accessory apartment and to maintain...
Speak into the microphone a little clearer.
Sorry about that.
Give us your address, please.
Thirteen ninety-three East Third Avenue, Bay Shore. I submitted permits to establish accessory apartment and to leave the existing accessory garage structure in the backyard, as is. It's been there for over thirty, thirty years, rotting. I bought the property, cleared the overgrown brush, and took down all the rotting wood and fixed it. It was my mistake not to know that I had to pull permits to fix it. But in, when the inspector came, I was made aware that, you know, I had to pull the permits, but given the materials we were using, it shouldn't be an issue getting the permits. But I'm also looking to establish the accessory apartment in my home.
Mr. Montero, the accessory apartment may not be difficult, I don't know. The height is impossible. You can't grant that.
No, it's, it's got a history. So, based on my understanding, my property and my neighbor's property were one property previously? And the garage has been there for over thirty years, based on my understanding of, of...
Yeah, this, this has actually been before the board in the past, twice, in nineteen ninety and nineteen ninety-three. This is effectively the same exact structure that was seen by the board at the time, so it's actually more than thirty years old, because it was fairly old even at that point.
It's thirty years old, or a hundred and thirty years old?
Uh, more than thirty years old than, to my knowledge. I'm not sure exactly.
Quite a bit more than thirty, probably. Quite a bit more.
It's, it's probably more like a hundred years old.
That, that would make sense, with the rotting in the wood that I saw when I bought the property.
But the two things that are important to note about that, one, it predates code restricting the height to fourteen feet. And secondly, the board at the time effectively approved its conditional that it cannot be used for habitable space. It was two stories at the time, and it was this height at the time. Height was not addressed at the time, because again, it was conforming at that time in nineteen ninety.
What are you using it for now?
It's just going to be a garage, where I'm going to have my tools, cars.
So what Nick was saying, it predates the code, what people always say it's grandfather.
Okay.
Grandmother. Wow, grandmother. You may have to call a break, and grandma.
Like you said, the properties were two different properties once.
Yeah.
And there's a chance that this, it used to be a workshop.
Okay.
That's how the board referred to it in nineteen ninety-three, when they conditioned the subdivision upon the conversion of the workshop to a permitted accessory structure.
Okay.
It seems as if... It seems as if it exists on a CO, but the CO of your neighbor were the old houses.
That would, that would make sense.
So...
Because I, I know my, my house was built after the fact, and the way the garage is, well, the structure is set up, the garage door is facing south, and south you can see is the fence line. So the fence line is about ten feet from there, so it'd be impossible to even use that garage.
So it was a very large property. It was in an estate. It went to a builder, and in nineteen ninety-three, the attorney representing the seller asked the board to condition the approval for the subdivision on, on the condition that this workshop be converted to a use that's legal as an accessory structure. That we do believe, and you'd have to research this further with the building department, that it then got placed on the CO so that the sale could happen. On, and then when the CO got split for your house to get constructed, it remained on the other property's CO.
So my neighbor did get a letter to come here today, but he's out of the country. He's actually flying back in today. He has no issues with it. He, he said that, you know, if you guys give him a phone number, he'll call or, you know, show, write a letter, whatever he needs to do, but he has no issues with it.
Okay, do you plan on leaving the, you said the garage door faces south, so it's...
I'm going to be changing the garage door, so it's going to be facing west.
Facing East Third?
Yes.
Will you eliminate the other one?
Yes, yes.
So perhaps the building department was of the opinion that because you're doing all this work on it, the board needed to reinstate the nineteen-foot height? Everybody following? It exists on a CO, but he's doing significant amount, fairly significant amount of work on it.
Uh, and I, I just want to note that's, those pictures are probably about three years old. That overgrown area behind the shed, I also cleared that out. So it's actually leveled out. There's about, there used to be about fifteen trees back there, there's about three now.
Is anyone else who'd like to be heard in this matter? No, all right. Take a motion, please.
Bay Shore?
Bay Shore.
Where's Chris?
All in favor?
Aye.
Application is granted. Three years on the accessory apartment.
Thank you very much.
I can't believe, I can't believe Chris hasn't made it here. I didn't think so either, but he swore he would.
Application number six forty-six dash twenty-five, Home Dream Builders LLC. Permission to subdivide parcel into three lots. Lot one to erect two-story dwelling on lot having area of seventeen thousand eight hundred and twenty square feet instead of required twenty thousand square feet. Lot two to erect two-story dwelling on lot having area of seventeen thousand eight hundred and twenty square feet instead of required twenty thousand square feet. And lot three to erect two-story dwelling on lot having width of ninety-three point eight six feet instead of required one hundred feet throughout, an area of seventeen thousand eight hundred and eighteen square feet instead of required twenty thousand square feet. Residence double A district, northwest corner of Amityville Street and Connect Quad Avenue, Islip Terrace.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the applicant, Steve Bertolino, one thirty West Main Street, East Islip, New York. Just some quick housekeeping items. The public notice for the call of the meeting is incorrect. All three lots will have a conforming front yard width. So where it says about the middle of the call to erect a two-story dwelling on lot having width of ninety-three point eight six.
So, so the...
That's the rear of the lot.
Yeah, the important word is throughout. So the, yeah, so the front yard, you said like at the street is only...
Just wanted to make sure that we're in compliance because I had worked with planning a little bit on this, so...
Well, you're not exactly in compliance, you need a very small relaxation.
On the front, on the front, not the throughout.
Right.
Point taken. That being said, this board may recall this application or prior application for this property was in front of you back in December of twenty twenty-four. At that time, I was not engaged for the applicant, but my understanding is that the presentation consisted of subdividing the parcel into three lots, and those lots were non-conforming on size. After being denied and working with the planning department, as the board is aware, I submitted a letter to be reheard on a substantial changed application, and that's what brings us here tonight. Going back and forth with planning, we did come up with the idea that these three lots, as you see before you, would all have a conforming, if you will, FAR, a conforming front yard, not the throughout, as Ms. Passaro just pointed out, on the one lot, which we're going to call the Easterly Lot. One other housekeeping item, just so that we avoid any confusion crossing Ts and dotting Is, for some reason, the call of the meeting, and I think it came from the zoning notice, reflects that lot one and lot three are reversed. It really doesn't matter in the end. Two lots will have a square footage of seventeen thousand eight hundred and twenty, and one lot, which is the Easterly Lot on the corner of Connect Quad, would have a square footage of seventeen thousand eight eighteen. I think the zoning denial just had lot three and lot one reversed. Again, I, I think it's more important to reflect that we have the two lots at, at one square footage of seventeen eight twenty and the one lot at seventeen eight eighteen. With that in mind, that is only a relaxation request of about ten point one percent on each of, I'm sorry, ten point nine percent on each of the lots, with those seventeen thousand eight twenty, when twenty thousand square feet is required on each. We have no other variance request. We're not asking for an FAR. We're not asking for side yard or rear yard setbacks other than the one through lot frontage that we just spoke about. As far as the front yard setbacks, they're all set forth at forty point one zero feet when a forty-foot setback is required. On the Westerly Lot, we have a front yard frontage of a hundred and eighteen point eighty feet. On the middle lot, we have a front yard of a hundred and eighteen point eighty feet. And on the Easterly Lot on Connect Quad, we have a hundred and forty-three point nine eight. Only a hundred-foot frontage is required on each of those, so we exceed the front yard width setbacks on each of the lots. And I think what's important for that is from the street view, we would be in compliance and we would be in keeping with the nature and character of the area with all of the street view to each lot on that. The prior application had each of these lots at fourteen thousand square feet. We're now coming in at eighteen thousand square feet, which is a twenty-seven percent increase over what was previously thought and talked about. We did have a radius map produced. I believe the board should have that as well. It's a five-hundred-foot radius map, highlighted with certain wonderful colors. Helps us see things a little bit more clearly. And I would point out to the board that this parcel is in a double A zone. It... Oh, I have a much prettier one, Mr. Ritaliata. Do you have this one? No? I can hand it up if the board doesn't have it. That is all correct. The thing is, if you look at the subdivision map that was submitted, lot one and three are reversed. In other words, yes. I don't know what yours says, but looking at mine, if I used, sure.
Yeah, I'm not sure there's an issue. Parcel three is listed as the one at the corner with Connect Quad and Amityville Street.
And, and that's correct, except what the, one of the documents that was submitted is showing that as parcel one. And if you look at the zoning denial letter, parcel one and parcel three are, are reversed. Again, it, it's semantics.
Well, I think the call of the meeting is accurately representing what we're seeing here, though. Parcel three is the one with a ninety-three point six eight in the back and seventeen eight eighteen, which is accurate to the plan.
Okay, then what you, what you have, what you have is different than what I was provided with. Yes, Mr. Ritaliata, your, your map is correct. I may have an earlier rendition of that where one and three were reversed, so maybe they changed it accordingly. Yes. I just want, again, I think the bigger point is the, there were two parcels at one size and one parcel at the other, and I didn't want to mix them up. So I, I was going to refer to them as the east parcel, the west parcel, and the middle parcel. When all said and done, I think, you know, in keeping with the nature and character of the area, looking from the street, you do have front yard widths that exceed the one-hundred-foot requirement. I handed up the, the radius map, and you can see that this parcel is in a double A zone, surrounded by single A and a business one. Within the double A zone, there are three parcels that are less than twenty thousand square feet. And within the double A and A zone of the five-hundred-foot radius, there are a total of eight parcels that are less than twenty thousand square feet. Indeed, some of them are as small as fifteen thousand and fourteen thousand. If you were to violate the unwritten rule of five hundred feet and go to seven hundred feet, we would have an additional eleven more parcels in this surrounding neighborhood. Holy or, or touching? I'd have to look, I, I believe there are, there's one or two, but without looking at my pretty map that I handed up, I really... I, that's why I said, I believe there was one that was holy, but I don't know that the board has ever gone down to five hundred feet completely encompassing. My understanding was if it touches five hundred feet, this board would consider it.
I believe there'd be at least two, for what that's worth. There's the, the two very skinny ones that are close by to the west.
You know, Mr. Wexler, when we try to prepare for what the board might, you know, swing at us, we, we generally go by what was happening in the past, and I've always gone by what's touching. How many are touching? We, I said, we, we have at least three within the double A zone that are less than the twenty thousand square feet. We have eight, if you include the double A and the single A, of less than twenty thousand square feet. And if I were to violate your rules and go to seven hundred square feet, we would have eleven more parcels. Usually, yes, three plus five is eight, but I have eight parcels combined between the double A and the single A. And we, and we all know for the record that the double A is, is a much more stringent requirement. The lots are bigger, generally seventy-five versus a hundred frontage and all that. I believe the, the application, as it is being presented and as it has changed from the last time after working with planning, is in keeping with the nature and character of the immediate community within the five-hundred-foot community, certainly within seven-hundred-foot community. We have no adverse environmental impact. We're, we're not asking for anything that's not generally seen in the immediate vicinity of this application. If the board has any other questions, or I suspect there might be some neighbors that have some comments, be more than happy to address them.
Um, a few things, just to quickly correct one thing. I, I do not recall either I nor anybody else in planning speaking with the applicant after the last hearing, although I do understand they did speak with other people at the town, which to my mind, I think they got pretty good advice. The, the difference between this application and the last one, the big one, in the previous application, they were proposing one lot with the existing house to remain, to conform, and the other two were like at fourteen thousand square feet. The fourteen thousand square feet was a big issue. Instead, what they're doing here is proposing to demolish the existing dwelling and make three lots of relatively equal size, all of which are about a eleven percent relaxation of the code, one of which has a lot width issue, a very minor one. That's effectively all they're asking for here is about an eleven percent relaxation, ten point nine actually, on each one of the parcels. Character of the area is mixed, I would say. There's some undersized lots, some around fifteen thousand, the two skinny ones are eighteen thousand. There's also several that are oversized. There's more than a couple that are at thirty thousand square feet. So it's a very mixed area, some undersized, some oversized. So really, I, I believe the strongest argument they probably have here is just a substantiality of ten point nine percent for each lot and otherwise effectively conforming to zoning.
How you doing? My name is Samir Abdallah. I live in two sixty-seven Amityville Street. You got my name? Samir, S.A.M.I.R., Abdallah, A.B.D.A.L.L.A. I live on the property next to the proposed property. Okay. Now, I want to know, we are discussing the, the, the variation or we are discussing what, what we, we will suffer from this project? Okay. The, the three lot size, it will end up that, the, the next side, the next side to me will be so close that we, will, will hurt our privacy, definitely.
What he's trying to tell you is that the house as proposed is conforming to zoning. They, they maintain the required setback from your property, same as what you would be required.
Okay, anyway, this is, this is one, this is one of the points that I want to mention. The other point, this particular street, the alignment of the entry and the exit is very hard to make it. Having three lots on this corner will make it hard for any car to ma- to make right or to make left from this corner. Especially having three brand-new lots. I'm sorry? I haven't heard what? Yeah, the traffic light, that's what I meant. Well, well, the angle, the angle of Amityville with Connect Quad is a little bit awkward. It's not under ninety. In, well, okay. Having those three lots, the proposed three lots, will definitely, will result in some car standing in front of them, which will make it almost impossible to make it, to make the right turn or the left turn. That's in addition to our own inconvenience of having such close, brand-new property to us. That's all what I want to mention.
I have a petition as well. I live at two seventy-six, right across, Jamie Kaiser. I was here last time. So if you look at my property and the one ahead of me, he is directly across. That's like me building a house in between me and my neighbor. Everyone on... Everyone on this block has a lot of property. So now I'm going to look at three small houses are going to be squeezed in. I have kids. There's already enough traffic. You're right off of Connect Quat Avenue. And you're going to add more housing, more people. For what? We pay enough taxes. I don't think that this is fair. If I wanted to live in Nashville and be on top of each other, I would easily go there. I'm in the town of Islip because we all have property. If you go down our block, there's only two houses, but they got a huge yard. I think that's fair if you guys look at that. Do you want this? It's a petition for our block.
James Guthrie, 251 Amityville Street. Like, like everyone said already, we have, we have large properties here. I just wanted to bring up, my grandfather tried to split our property a long time ago, and you can see my property's actually fifty-four thousand square feet. It didn't have the width of two, two hundred feet. It only had a hundred and eighty, so it would have been ninety each, which I'm glad he was not able to split the property, so now that I own it and live there. So, you know, we, we just felt like, you know, if the houses, if there was enough room, if it fit the zoning, yeah, sure, he could split it three ways. Definitely could see putting two houses on the, on the property. It's understandable, but, you know, three houses and it doesn't meet the zoning, it just doesn't make sense to, to put them in. Okay.
My name is Grace Iadanza, I-A-D-A-N-Z-A. I live at 822 Connect Quat Avenue. My concern, cesspools, power grid, I mean, there's flooding there that we can't even get it fixed. So you're going to add another house over there to make it worse flooding? The flooding's been there for, I don't know, sixty years at least, because my husband was raised in the house that we're in. It comes up. So what's going to happen on that side? Either they're going to do something where it's going to be worse for me and I'm going to get more flooding, or it's going to be terrible for that corner house. Two houses over there, look, what are you going to do? But that third house on the corner, you're looking for, that's going to be a problem. The corners don't align, the traffic light is ridiculous, people don't follow the CVS going down the street as it is to not make a left turn. Everybody makes a left turn. I'll add that they go through my driveway, which is a real inconvenience, to say the least. But it's not, I, I, I know you're going to say that it's cool because it's within the logistics, but it just doesn't make sense to us.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie McNamara, M-C-N-A-M-A-R-A. I live at 258 Amityville Street. My property is nearly thirty thousand. I've always been very proud to live in my neighborhood, which has always been considered horse property. We have always been known to be this, most of our neighborhood, including a couple blocks surrounding us, have all have very large property. There are minimums set for a reason. You guys have set, there's laws and minimums for a reason. We're asking for almost eleven percent. I know you said ten point nine, but eleven percent, that's high to decrease that much. There's environmental hazards, such as somebody brought up cesspools, that's true, what's going to happen with that? There's also bringing down property value. We have a uniqueness to our neighborhood of having such large, beautiful properties. Decreasing them into three and putting these tiny homes onto them will definitely affect our value of our properties surrounding. And it's also going to affect the visual of the, of the neighborhood. We all have, like I said, these big, beautiful properties. Dividing them, small little areas, is definitely going to impact what we're used to seeing. And I also, I'm also a local firefighter in Islip Terrace, and I can tell you that that area is a very large area that has many accidents, that corner. It's a very blind corner, especially coming on to Amityville from Connect Quat. It's a rough corner, so to add more traffic directly in that spot is definitely a hazard that should be strongly considered. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Retaliata. Just a couple of notations. The driveway on the Easterly Lot, which I've been corrected is now lot three, will be approximately a hundred and seven feet from the corner curb of the intersection of Connect Quat and Amityville Street. So we've positioned that driveway to be eighteen feet off of the Westerly Lot line of that particular lot. Take the eighteen feet plus an eighteen-foot driveway, it's thirty-six. We've got a hundred and forty-four approximate feet. So we're about a hundred and six and change, a hundred and seven feet off of that. As far as the, the widths of the lot, as you can see right on the screen in front of you, just two doors down, there were two lots that are both sixty-foot wide, right, right there. And the point I was trying to make before with keeping in the nature and character of the area is that from the street view, we exceed the minimum required of a hundred feet. You know, in one, we received it by twenty percent at a hundred and eighteen feet and on the two lots. And at a hundred and forty-three feet, we're almost fifty percent larger than what, you know, is required by the code as far as your frontage goes. So addressing that aspect, I, I think that the application i, is good. With respect to the comment about a septic system, all three parcels have been proposed to be developed with the, the new nitrogen-reducing IA systems. I know this board sees a lot of that over on Fire Island, which is now just about mandatory for everything you do over there. Here on the mainland, it's not yet mandatory, but it's certainly something that we proposed and is on our site plans and is, is what we intend on doing. As far as the property values, I'd like to just hand up the, we'll call it a rendition or the front elevation of what the house would look like. These are not necessarily oversized houses for the lot. We're not building, you know, McMansions or, or any monstrosities here. We will be keeping with the nature and character of what's there already. I don't believe there is truly any adverse environmental impact. If there's any flooding on the roadway, certainly any Islip resident is allowed to call Department of Public Works and, and make that complaint to see if there is flooding there. As far as the site itself, the site itself will contain ninety-eight percent of all water that, you know, is brought onto the site, meaning rainwater or runoff is de minimis coming off of the site. So I don't see how these sites would be adding to any, if there is, flooding problem that might exist over there. Hopefully, have I've addressed all of the concerns raised by the community. I understand I can't, you know, change their minds and make them happy, but as you know, my role here is, is to make sure that we conform to, you know, 267 and, and present the board with the best application we can. I don't think the, the applicant can achieve, you know, any greater or better applicant. We've made the best application we can, and as I pointed out before, we are not seeking any other variances with respect to this application. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Have a good evening.
Okay, application number 494-25, Beach House 21 LLC. In accordance with a proposed written decision dated October 28, 2025, the application is denied on motion of...
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that's carried by a vote of four to nothing, Mr. Nicolaia being absent. Application number 571-25, in accordance with a proposed written decision dated October 28, 2025, the application of Steel Belmont Commercial LLC and Marcus ISP Commercial Holdings LLC is granted on motion of...
Motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Application number 572-25, Steel Belmont Rental LLC and Marcus ISP 281 Rental Holdings LLC and Steel Belmont condo LLC and Marcus ISP condos holding LLC. And we would note for the record that those are new owners, the deed recorded recently. The application, in accordance with a proposed written decision dated October 28, 2025, the application is granted on motion of...
Motion.
Second? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. That's a wrap.